Okay, Chair.
Ready? Okay. Parliament in order, Planning Commission meeting. It is Monday, February 3rd. Item one on our agenda, we have three swearing ins to take care of, two renewals, and we missed Tina first time around. So Carrie is going to stand in front of us. The three names, once Carrie gets squared away, you'll stand up and take your own seat. Excellent.
Sign this and give it back to me, and then get scanned in, and then you'll get it back.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Item two on the agenda now. We're doing routine. I was ready to do minutes, but that's fine. So lecture to the officers. First meeting in February. Chair and vice chair. As most everybody knows from looking at the rule, the chair can stay for two terms. Technically, I replace Sam and Mark. Because I was vice chair last year. I would be ready to stand for chair this year, if we're comfortable with that. Is there a discussion on that? Because it'd be two separate motions, right? One for chair, one for vice chair? Yeah. Got a motion, we got a second on the chair position. Is any other discussion? Does anybody want to nominate? Anyone else here?
Was that Mr. Miglio for the second?
Ed's got the second. He asked Tina had the motion. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Those no. We're done with that. Now on to vice chair. Harry, you have an update?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Steve isn't here, but he already...
Got it. Are there any other folks interested in being vice chair this year? Okay, I've got a motion and a second for Bart to be vice. Been a little sideways here. Harry, I'm looking towards you guys. Would we just vote on this motion as is?
Someone has to nominate.
Which has just happened. Of that...
It is one.
Well, no, because nobody nominated him.
Nobody nominated him.
That's where I was just in the gray area. I want to make sure. Is there anyone interested in nominating Steve? He expressed his interest in doing it. I hear none. I've got the motion. I've got a second on Bart. All those in favor, say aye. All those who have no? Bart's vice chair. Carrie, we covered all the bases on that one. Okay. Review of the bylaws for... That is part of our annual meeting as well, that every year, we just take a quick look at these. Some years, we spend three minutes on them. Some years, we spend an hour on them. I'm going to look to Harry to see if we're giving them three-minute or hour version today.
Harry, let's do the three-minute.
Ready? So that's the question to the group now. Are there any discussion points? Does anyone want to bring anything up on our commission bylaws? I'll repeat, I had to ask Harry right before the meeting, and I'm not ready. It's just worded in a very clunky manner that our annual meeting... First meeting of the year, the planning commission shall set forth a schedule of meetings for the upcoming, including the annual meeting for the planning commission. And then we've got a separate section for our annual meeting. It's just worded really poorly, and I even got confused. So if we're going in and tinkering anything else, maybe we can take a stab at cleaning up that language. But if we're not going to tinker anything else, we can easily visit this next year. Anybody got... Bart? A question. Those who weren't here a year ago, that was, we had the hour version a year ago, that we changed all the language on attendance. Kind of a unique situation. Excellent question. Does anybody have anything to say? Tina, go ahead. Point well taken. What we were addressing is, in the last 10 years, we had two members that basically quit coming. And we didn't have a mechanism to do anything. So that's why there was that language in there of, you know, total number of meetings missed, unless you call ahead, unless it's Tuesday. But it's not elegant, but that was how we got there. So kind of same point, as I looked to Harry. If there's a way to clean up and address what Tina said. And I don't mean to interrupt. That's where we ran into trouble, because there's not 24. Very often, we scrub meetings. So we don't know how many meetings. But if we have no reason to meet? Ed, go ahead. Bart's got his hand up. And now that I'm reading through this, I certainly see Tina's point. Fails to attend one-sixth of regularly scheduled meetings, you know, say 15%. Are you comfortable with this part of the discussion, Harry? Yeah, that's what I'm hearing, not change in the essence. I would be careful starting to pull on the thread of regular meeting versus regularly scheduled meeting, because we cancel so many. And the intent of it again is that if you've got somebody missing consecutive meetings, that's what we're much more concerned about. Trust me, this was the hour-long discussion. But if it's a medical... Did Tina... Yeah, you can't... There you go. That's why I'm just... We want to bleed into this water gently, because it was a very complicated discussion last year. We settled on this. If we want to change the one-sixth to a percentage, I think that's reasonable. But if we start changing much more, that's a much bigger discussion. Our group should have. It was worded in a way that was... Okay, Sam's got her hand up.
The only caveat to that would be, and we do not have these regularly, or I don't think ever, but special meetings. Those are really, really hard to claim for as a parent, as a working mom. And so if that is taken into account, if there's a special meeting on a Wednesday for something important, and again, this has not happened, but it has happened to me previously. That's not something I can claim for. I can claim for twice a month on Mondays for work. It's something that my employer knows I'm paying for. My family knows. But if we're going to take in attendance as a whole, and there's weird things happening for special sessions...
Chair, may I speak for a moment? So how the spreadsheet is set up is, if a clerk is set up, that if you call in advance, it's an extra. So it's not counted. Yeah. So, yes. It's only when you don't call. That's the problem. And we had that issue last year. So most people are in good standing. And we can provide the worksheet, the spreadsheet, if you'd like.
Let me take it back to Sam's point. The only time I can think of special meeting is like when we do that meeting with the city council, and we meet on a Tuesday. But that's not short notice. I know what you're talking about. The way this is worded, that a majority of the planning commission could say, hey, we want to meet on Thursday night. Here, go ahead. Maybe that's why we use the regularly scheduled meeting. I wasn't sharing that thing a year ago. And that's why we look at this annually, just to kind of bear it through it. I think... Tina, go ahead. Okay, have we beat this enough now? We'll figure out Tina's percentages instead of one-sixth. You're good? All right. Approving the minutes of our last meeting together, which was on Tuesday, January 21st. That's on page eight of our agenda packet. Sam's got the motion. Second by Mike on the minutes as written, as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Those no. That Carrie's done with the minutes. This public hearing thing continues to carry over. Harry, do you have any update at all?
Chair, so the applicant is currently looking at going through this process. Different subdivision projects. They are working on it. Have actually weighed... You know, really, I think it's...
Will I need another motion when this is done? I'm going to open up public hearing. Again, for the record, we've opened up the public hearing on this request on a preliminary plat regarding Central Avenue. There is no one here from the public. The applicant has requested that this be carried over to our next meeting. But that's how we would want it. Mike's got the motion. Sam's got the second, that we carry this public hearing over to our next meeting. Discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Those no, we're done with that. That's our public hearing this evening. I'm assuming there's no request to be heard, and then I can just get into the next one. Copy. Now we're up for items to discussion. Item six on our agenda, it's A and B. Some tied together. Planning Commission operational basics. And then B is our 2025 work plan, which we've actually been talking about the work plan on and off for the last quarter. So do you have a presentation at all, Harry, on this?
I do.
Okay. All right. Ready?
Yeah. So what I've done is kind of put there... Able to borrow from the city attorney quite a bit, and some of the... Who have scheduled breaks in here.
So we won't interrupt him until he asks us. Perfect. Thank you for that.
So, planning commission role. So you guys know that you're appointed by council? Supposed to advise and recommend... Or providing... But you do help provide a little bit of guidance for me and anyone else that's been there for working on divisions. For really big ones. Part a pretty integral part of updating the conference. I think the last time that our conference updated was when we were on the local level. So whenever you, anytime, do need to work on that day. But, you know, as we bring projects through, you know, we regularly look at our conference. But meet the intent of the conference. Do talk about this quite a bit. Generally, you know, planning commission, because you are an appointed role, you are in some of that... About this later on. Could reflect that on... But that could come back to you. About that as your... So open meeting law, what counts as... Room? So if there were three planning commissioners here... A little bit more thoughtful than that. Chance gathering at member's local event or member's downtown does not mean that there is a meeting. So if you're trying to meet and talk about projects, and, you know, you... That's still... Keep all the discussion on. Do have some sort of... I think we've done this in the past, where a manager is going to city council, some sort of joint session. You know, any of those joint sessions that we have a council, they're also open meetings. And so anyone from the public can show up. You know, if we were to have a work session, you know, again, those are all open to the public. Anytime that we're meeting, it must be... Talked about. For email and social media, they can also violate the open meeting law. So, you know, if we're all of a sudden having a giant email chain where we're all kind of talking about a topic, or talking about setting up something for a meeting, that could be a violation. So, you know, for any sort of questions, any sort of, you know, direct... Staff, general. But we don't, you know, when we're talking about different use projects, you know, sometimes I see on certain citizens of Faribault, people talking on those platforms. I totally understand it. You know, you do have some First Amendment rights. You don't need all of that. Commissioner. But it's city policy to not discuss it. At that point, we are potentially violating it. Any general questions about all that? Okay. So gift law, so this is kind of an interesting thing. You know, when it comes to local officials, there is the potential for, say, a developer or contractor. You know, if there is a potential item that might move through a planning commission, working with a contractor, and they buy you dinner, that could be considered a gift. You have a limit at the state. Set by the state, it's $5. So if you want... Like, let's say there's a developer. He's like, hey, can I buy you a coffee? That's probably okay. $5 coffee's not an issue. Soon as we get more than that... You know, kind of within the same vein, so conflicts of interest. So, you know, don't participate in a session, an item, a session where, you know, there might be some sort of interest from you in what happens. In this case, it could be financial. In other cases, you know, you might have a really good relationship with someone that's coming through, proposing a project, and you're a friend, and you just want to... Friend. That could be a potential issue. If you do feel like that there is something that connects you to a project in some way, shape, or form, say, you know, a pretty typical one that I've gotten over the years has been, hey, I'm working with this developer on a completely different project. They're coming forward, and they want to do a project here in Faribault, but I'm on the planet. You know, at that point, you know, we get into some questions like, are you in a financial contract? Yes, then there's probably a conflict of interest. Sometimes conflicts of interest, we just need to talk it through. It might not be very clear, very... Something that we can talk through. And, you know, the city attorney needs to be involved in order to help figure out if something's a conflict of interest. Generally, you know, if you do have an interest, disclose it. Say very early. What I would recommend is, even before an item starts, there, I have a bunch of interests with this item, so I'm going to remove myself from that. At that point, conflict of interest would say, okay, you know, you need to leave the room, you know, let debate happen. Decision. And after that's done, then you can come back. Questions about gift law, conflicts of interest? Yep? I, just off the top of my head, I think my gut reaction is probably the reason being that there's no direct financial contact between you and that family or that person's family. There might be between you and that family. But there's nothing directly tying you. I think if I was you, what I would still do is... This person, they're related to this person. I think you could be big about it. I think either way, just... Sure, yeah. I think either way, disclosing that can be... Something that you would have to do unless you were stepping out of the room. Up to you. So there's a little bit of gray area.
Everything that came in front of the... Had it worked that way for years. I can't vote on this one. Back then, the rules were you would just sit quietly in your chair. But, you know, it's... People that do this are involved in the community. You had something last year where my brother used to be the general manager of a business that was in front of us. I didn't benefit financially one way or another. It's a case by case. Ed, go ahead. Ron?
So, next topic is data practices. So if you guys are taking notes during a meeting, you have like a notebook or something, and you're taking notes as I do. Through. You know, data practices apply to all data. Includes your notes.
Includes your notes. So I think just be very careful about how you're operating within the sphere of data practices. So there's kind of a. You know, I think for a lot of people, they may, you know, just take notes on like an agenda or within some sort of packet. Their practices would say, no, you don't have to do that. So at that point, there's kind of a question. What do you do then? So I don't think that there's a very clear way of working through data practices, you know, if you're just making notes. But, you know, generally, when we're, when we're talking about data, it's all voicemails that you might have on a specific topic. Let's say a developer calls a planning commission because they know them and they want to talk about a project before you get some planning permission. They'll also tell me about that. Could be, could be a potential issue. So if there are any data requests, you know, if anyone says, hey, I know that this developer called you and wants you to voicemail, I want that voicemail. Let me know immediately. So at that point, I'll be able to kind of work through that with them. Sort of like freedom of information. So I'll be able to work through that.
I just wanted to. Ask him about our. My chair, you know, if it's a full room, I'm writing down who spoke and all, you know, just the logistics of the meeting. And I went to Scott right after the meeting. And he said, if you routinely throw that stuff away after every meeting. Where you run into trouble is when you, because I have worked with people up here over the years that have just carried filing cabinets full of stuff. They save everything. But Scott said, yeah, if, if you're just taking basic notes of who said what in the meeting, always throw that away.
Well, good. Yeah, that, that's a good clarification from Scott.
Because I, I would, yeah, because I, I wanted to know, am I supposed to keep, you know, as long as you're getting into trouble is you save some and not the others and.
And then the very last topic that I have is just meeting procedures. General guiding principles, you know, chairs should largely impartial and facilitate the meeting, which does, and then, you know, in terms of kind of operating within the meeting, making sure that everyone has. Might be some back and forth. Think if there is some sort of interruption, if it's an emergency, that's fine. If it's just an interruption, don't do that. So just make sure that everyone has their moment, their time in order to speak through and to kind of, you know, put all of their points down. Only one motion could be discussed at a time. Motion can be amended. There could be someone that says, hey, I, I motioned to do XYZ, someone seconds. And someone potentially, other than the person that officially made that, could make an amendment and say, amend the current motion to EBC, seconded. Then you vote on that motion first. That kind of make it clear?
So the way I was described it is you're walking through a series of doors. Got to walk back out. And I didn't mean to interrupt, but the point four of the motion be worded, I move, we do. XYZ. It makes it so much easier for the chair. And the one, one person that maybe doesn't word them as succinctly. It's sleaze or anybody. I move, we do.
I do for a lot of developments that I think through. If you look in the staff report, usually trying to include someone who's in there that will be able to make an amendment. Just started doing that this year. Do you have any questions or just a little bit different? But with that, questions?
Open presentation?
Yep.
Work plan?
Work plan. So, Mr. Chair, this is potentially pretty quick. You know, in terms of our work plan, seems like coming out of a lot of our work sessions, our work plan is to do the CDO bootcamp. It's something that I'm trying to work on. Trying my best to put it all together and to at least, you know, kind of kick it off with a different speech and sort of the general parts of, or the, the general parts of. If there are additional things that the planning commission wants to do this year, this would, this would kind of be that. You can always amend it later on. At the beginning of the year, the annual meeting. You can think about the whole year.
Have anything? And again, to Harry's point, this is something we talked about a lot.
Okay. There are some good resources out there on. Put together some of those resources. There's a really good one that Leslie found. It was about EDUs and housing affordability. Faribault does have an EDU ordinance. I don't think it's been used a whole lot, especially because it's a condition use permit and. It's, it's something, something to keep in the back of our mind as we go through the rest of the.
Anything else? That's the work plan. It's a good time to refresh our memory on board and commission updates and reports. Reason that's here is over the years, for many, many years, there was a planning commission member that was on the ETA. That fell, by the way, set a few years. But this, this was on the agenda to provide those updates. Are any of us on any other boards and commissions in the city? Is there a logic in just our agenda format that maybe we just reword that agenda item to update on council action or something? Because we kind of combined it all together. But if none of us are on any boards or commissions to provide updates.
There, give me. Thinking that it actually might be spelled out in the ordinance.
Well, I mean, if that's the case, this isn't a. But you see what I'm saying, that if, none of us are on boards and commissions.
Finding it. So if there is, if there is a potential change.
I'm just saying that, that we always have board and commission updates and reports. None of us are on any other boards and commissions, well, our annual charter commission meeting. It, we don't need this item on the agenda.
Okay. Yeah, I will look through and just make sure.
Right.
By removing it, but.
Yeah, I'm not trying to violate state law. It, it just seems kind of unnecessary agenda item.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll work with Carrie.
Yeah, because I know for a few years, that line item was city council action updates, where your predecessor would tell us, oh, yeah, the thing you approved two weeks ago.
Yeah, and that's, and that's something that I can, I could still do. We've just kind of had somewhat of a lull. It's been a little weird. We're doing a lot of work, kind of. Application. Fix. It's more of a. Eventually, we'll bring them through the process. We will bring through a conditional use permit at the next meeting. Take care. So find the lookout for that. We'll definitely have a. Second meeting. It'll be Tuesday.
Oh, that's right, present.
Because, yep.
The 18th?
It'll be.
If it's, if our next meeting is Tuesday, the 18th, that's going to be Bart's first meeting. I'm going to be in a hotel room somewhere.
It is the 18th.
All right. Good luck with that. So we're ready for a motion to adjourn? Mike's got the motion.